Call the meeting to order. Hey, Vanessa, will you call the roll, please?
Chair McKnight Morton, Light Chair Fleming.
Here.
Trevor L. Morgan.
Here.
Secretary Davis. Trustee DeVarty.
Here.
Trustee Gatcher.
Here.
Trustee Lena.
Here.
Okay, we need to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
A second?
Support.
Are there any comments on the agenda? As is. Hearing none? Moving on. Tab A, approval of the minutes from November. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Move, do I hear a support?
Support.
I have a question before the vote.
Yes.
We misspelled Waddams name in the minutes.
Okay.
And they've been generous supporters and they'd like to correct that.
Can you point out where that is?
I'll find it for you.
Oh, Vanessa, can you find, okay Vanessa's good.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Ruth?
I'd just like to add, under my remarks, as I recall, I did thank Mr. Callahan, but I also asked for an update on the police, Washington Community College Police hiring and committees at some point, so I'd like the minutes to reflect that I raised that question. I made that request.
Any other comments on the November minutes? Okay. This is an accolade, right? So all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, minutes approved. Moving on to citizen participation, the WCCEA.
It'll take me longer to get to the podium than what I have to say.
That's a lovely tie, Dave.
I get to wear ugly ties about three weeks a year and you're suffering from that right now.
I'm actually impressed by the volume of ugly ties.
I've got a bunch of them. So only really two comments. The first is I'd like to note that we have three longtime faculty members who are retiring at the end of this semester. Connie Foster, Gloria Velarde, and Belinda McGuire. Between them, if I've done my math right, I think there's 77 years' experience here at the college. That represents a tremendous loss in all three of them, but especially, I guess, Connie Foster, because she has been an incredibly important figure in our radiography program, and I will say, a longtime important participant in the WCCEA. All three of them will be missed, and we wish them, we wish them good luck. And the only other thing I have to say to the board and to folks who are here and who are not here is have a happy holiday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, same to you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. Vanessa, did we get any written communications?
No.
No, okay. Moving on to special reports, we have special guests from SEMCOG to present for us Providing Quality Education for All Students. Nahid and Grant. And you have the presentation in the blue folder by your side.
Good evening, and thank you for the privilege of speaking to the board. We have met some of you before, but really, this is one of our first opportunities to see the whole board together, and we're really happy to be here. So my name is Nahid Hawk. I am the Manager of Talent and Economic Development for SEMCOG, and my colleague, Grant Brooks, is the Membership Specialist, and we work on education and workforce development issues together. So the report that you have in your packet, Providing Quality Education for All Students, is a regional effort to identify some of the challenges facing our education system, particularly our K-12 systems, and then figuring out how we can improve that, improve it, to ensure that all students are college and career-ready when they leave our K-12 systems. So the recommendations were developed by the SEMCOG and MAC Education Reform Task Force. MAC is our partner organization and represents business, labor, and government. And so along with our education and our local government members, we have a lot of sectors covered by our task force. And Trustee Diana McKnight Morton and President Rose Palanca were both members of the task force. Before we go over the actual recommendations, my colleague Grant will provide an overview of SEMCOG.
Just to give a brief overview here, so SEMCOG, or the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, is a regional planning, membership and council of governments. Our area of jurisdiction is made up of seven counties, out of the 83 counties in Michigan. So it's Livingston, Wayne, Oakland, McComb, Washtenaw, Monroe, and St. Clair. So we have about half the population of the state and much of the economic development. In this current map you see here, SEMCOG members are shaded, the state in all seven counties, and also six of the seven intermediate school districts and seven community colleges, or several community colleges as well. Our funding is provided by member dues, which we use to match federal and state grants. Each member, community, votes to join, pays member dues, and appoints delegates and alternates to SEMCOG's General Assembly. Our full membership committee, your delegate is Diana Ward McKnight, and your alternate is President Rose Palanca. So a little bit about member engagement. Membership at SEMCOG is organizational, so all of you are welcome to attend and participate in our meetings, attend workshops. You can contact our staff for any data and information you may need. We have a wealth of data on population, economic development, transportation, and land use. We encourage you to take advantage of this information as well as our events. Additionally, you are welcome to join any of our committees and task forces, where much of our, where much of SEMCOG's work is done. At those smaller group meetings, we also invite participation by representatives from the private and nonprofit sectors, labor organizations, as well as state and federal partners, so we can tap into expertise and perspectives from all the areas of the region. We encourage you to attend our General Assembly meetings, the three times a year. Our next one will be Thursday, March 22nd of next year. So a little bit about our data and maps here. Two tools that we would like to highlight are our new interactive employment data density map, which allows you to find the number of density of jobs, the region by sector, geographic location. We believe this is particularly of interest for community colleges members to design training programs in high-growth industries. Another resource is our community profiles. You all have that in your packets here. This provides key information in demographics, economy, and jobs, housing, transportation, and environment, and land use for the region by county, community level, or a combination of communities. We also, my mic's mixed up. Sorry. Our regional development forecast. I don't think that was supposed to be in this slide. So how further do I turn it over to Nahid? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Grant. So I'm going to go up a little bit. So education reform is not, I mean, challenges in our education system is not new. We've had them for years. We've always tried to address them. We try to address specific issues within our own communities, within our own districts, within our own counties, but still, there are many challenges in our education system. So why are SEMCOG and MAC looking at this issue now? And there are two main reasons. One, SEMCOG's 2045 forecast for demographic and economic changes shows that there's going to be a declining labor force, we're going to have fewer school-aged children, and at the same time, our economy is changing. Our manufacturing industry is going to start declining in terms of the number of jobs it produces. Although productivity will continue to increase, the number of jobs will decline in manufacturing. At the same time, the number of jobs in healthcare and information technology and certain other fields will continue to grow. So we need to be able to make sure that our education system prepares our students for the future. So in terms of declining school age population, our 2045 forecast shows that between 2002 and 2028, there's going to be a 25% decline in the number of school-aged children, ages five to 17. That has consequences, not just for our school-age population and our school districts and our ISDs, but also for community colleges, because fewer people who are getting through the system will be coming to sort of higher education. Although, as we look at our education system as a whole, we know that at the same time, different, it's not just the traditional school leavers who come to colleges. We have a changing economy with many people from different parts, stages of their lives going back to education. So that's a benefit. But certainly, one of the areas that will impact school-age students who come to community colleges and four-year colleges is the declining school age population. Another finding of our 2045 forecast is the declining prime working age population. And this means that we're going to have fewer people in the workforce. We already, we're looking at a 15% decline between, in the last 17 years. And we, future growth isn't going to be much more.
May I stop you for a second?
Sorry?
Are you telling me that I'm no longer in the prime working age?
This is a...
I guess I kind of knew that already.
I think it's all in your mind, but the data... So as we can see, the numbers, if we had looked at the working age population from 16 to 64, which is the traditional one, I think it's much broader.
That would make me feel better.
But certainly, that's something for us to think about, and think about the sort of training we want for people, the technology, how technology is going to be changing jobs. All of those things are very important to our education system, of course, community colleges being an important part of that. So in terms of job changes by major sector, we can see that the industrial mix of our economy will be changing and evolving. We can see that manufacturing will, the orange line, will continue to decline even as production increases. Our production of manufactured goods will increase over the next three decades, and the automotive industry, including the mobility industry, will account for many of our manufacturing jobs. But at the same time, the actual number of jobs will be declining. Having said that, this will be offset by growth in healthcare jobs, as well as knowledge-based, export-oriented services, IT engineering, other management, those types of jobs. We all, well, government will be largely stable, and retail will also be declining. But we know that's going to happen just through the way, you know, our shopping habits have changed over the years, and they'll continue to change. So why, why did we actually go into this? Why is education important to Southeast Michigan, to SEMCOG, to Metropolitan Affairs Coalition? Various reasons. We know that there's a very strong correlation between education and economic growth. We, our economic development strategy for Southeast Michigan identifies 11 key strategies. Four of them, the orange areas, are related to education, whether it's educating our future workforce, connecting people to jobs, advancing innovation and technology, they're all related to our education sector. We also know that education is essential to workforce development, and a superior education system creates a stronger workforce. Finally, education is important to our region's quality of life. Higher levels of education generally lead to higher incomes, attract businesses and jobs, create stable neighborhoods, and create more revenues for local governments to provide more services. And all of these improve quality of life. So education reform. We define this as the recognition that a well-educated population is an asset, and we can do better to prepare the state and its citizens for the inevitable changes resulting from national and global demographic and economic trends. Our current system has many challenges. We know it's underfunded, there's ever-changing curriculum and testing, lack of sufficient support systems, and we're not providing equal education opportunities for all students. All of these things will help us create a better education system and then create people who are able to graduate from school and ready for work and/or college. So what are the skills that we're looking for? What are the skills that we need to make sure that our students have? And although a lot of this presentation is based on K-12, it has such implications for the students who then come to community colleges and four-year colleges, who you are getting the recipients of an education system that in some cases aren't, isn't working as well as it should be. So we heard from, we did some research and we found that industry or business employers are looking for certain skills. And so looked at a few surveys. There was a Forbes survey of employers. The CTE, the State CTE Survey and Analysis asked employers what they were looking for in their students or new employees, and also Ford Motor Company did a presentation to our task force, and they came up with these ideas. And as you can see from this, among the top skills are actually your workplace skills or soft skills, not necessarily the technical skills. And we heard from various people that, you know, we can, we can teach technical skills, but we have to have those soft skills, turning up to work on time, or being able to work in teams, being able to collaborate, communicate, those are just as important. And as you can see, these were the top five for these three surveys that we looked at. So we know that we need to be working on both technical and soft or foundational skills. So we're not the only people doing it, as you know. There are lots of organizations that are looking at education, what is it that we need to do to improve our education system? And we actually, as part of this task force, we studied the reports from these various groups. So the choice is ours was a look at the Detroit Public Education System. The top 10 in 10 years was the Michigan Department of Education's report on making what we need to do to make Michigan a top 10 state for education. We also looked at the governor's 21st Century Education Commission's report, the best education system. We looked at these, and we didn't want to recreate the wheel, but we wanted to see if we differed in any way for Southeast Michigan. Are there particular challenges in Southeast Michigan that we need to be focusing on? And on page 46 of your reports, we actually have an analysis of these, the key recommendations from these five groups, as well as ours, and comparing, you know, where they focus and where we were focusing. So with that, I will briefly go through our recommendations. So we have one overarching goal and 15 recommendations. So we also, the report also includes various case studies from the region in terms of what's going on that's pretty, that's going well. And there's several from Washtenaw County, too. So in terms of our overarching goal, it's to provide every child access to an aligned, high-quality education from early childhood through post-secondary attainment to prepare for academic, career, and lifelong success. I think one of the things that we figured out was, we're not just creating people directly for the workforce, there are other things that matter, and we want to make sure that people, the students, that as they go through our education systems, are able to gain skills that allow them to do well in life as well, not just in the workforce. And there are many good education systems around the region, and many students are doing just fine. But future economic growth, especially in terms of the declining working age population and the fewer number of children who are going to be entering our school dis, school systems, means that we have to make sure that everybody is ready for the workforce. We need to make sure that everyone, we can engage everyone who's able to study to get, get the resources they need to be able to succeed in our education system. And that could mean whether, you know, whether we prepare them for work, or a two- or four-year college, industry certification, apprenticeship, or anything else, but we want to make sure that we are able to provide quality education, to provide a foundation for lifelong success. The five focus areas are high-quality instruction, funding, career technical education, serving at-risk and special needs students, and also ensuring that our governance structure, you know, really is accountable. So in terms of high-quality instruction, we really want to figure on the notion that educators are such an important part of our education system. We really need to elevate them, we need to provide them with fair evaluations and compensation, professional development opportunities, and we also need to elevate the teaching profession, make sure that it's attractive for young adults who are entering the workforce or higher education, thinking of education, teaching as a good career. We also want to make sure that our teaching programs are able to provide child-centered instruction, so that they're ready to deal with the different needs of students as they enter the teaching profession. We also want to, second area is redesigning funding. And again, the notion here is to redesign the funding to adequately meet the needs of all students. According to national data, school funding in Michigan has declined compared to other states. In 2002, Michigan ranked seventh in per capita spending on elementary and secondary education. By 2014, it was 34th. So a huge change. And the basic premise for redesigning Michigan's public education funding is that we're experiencing a declining school age population, and will continue to do over the next 30 years. In this context, the per pupil funding concept, which is what we're based on, doesn't provide adequate or equitable funding to maintain school finances. In addition, the funding system does not provide adequate supports for students with specific needs. We call for more equitable state funding, adjusting for declining school populations, and strengthening funding for students with special needs. Our third area is promoting career technical education. And our recommendations are to expand and strengthen the CTE pathway and promote awareness of in-demand jobs, so students, when they are going through their education experience, are able to look at opportunities where they maybe have an interest, and we can help them through the different pathways. We also want to integrate work-based learning, whether this is internships or apprenticeships or, you know, the exposure to different careers. And certainly, CTE has had a bad rap over the years. Many students and their parents see CTE as an option for students who are not college-bound. Yet, just as many students who from CTE programs enter higher education as from general education. And in fact, graduation rates are higher than the general population. So that's something to think about. Currently, you may be aware that there's several bills in the Michigan Legislature looking at improving career technical education and, you know, looking at options for students to consider skilled trades or technical careers. And one of those initiatives is the Michigan Career Pathways Alliance, and I believe Washtenaw Community College joined the alliance, and SEMCOG did, too. So we're supportive of that concept, that we need to get more students interested in and exposed to different career options. Our next category of recommendations is at-risk and special needs populations. Students who are considered at risk are those in danger of not graduating high school due to factors such as poverty, homelessness, medical and mental health issues. And our recommendations would address these needs through the provision of community-based support services, such as transportation, nutrition, and other social services. And we also want to address the chronic absenteeism in many districts, not just less fortunate, not less economically stable communities, but in many communities, absenteeism is a huge problem. And we want to address this through providing more community-based support and creating a system to monitor student attendance. Our last area of focus is ensuring, ensuring that governance supports accountability. And the recommendation is to rationalize and enhance accountability of K-12 education by requiring the same transparency and standards whether local district charter, education management organization, homeschool, or cyber school. This, by, we, we know that choice is important to parents, and we want to support that, but we want to make sure that the state has an important role in setting common standards for accountability and transparency for all types of schools, so that parents can make more informed decisions as they look at the different factors that they consider as they make their decisions. So in summary, traditional public schools still educate about 90% of students, including through schools of choice, but to maintain their role as successfully preparing students for college and careers, they need to provide high-quality instruction, need to make sure we have enough resources to support all students and also those with special needs. And we also want to make sure that our education system helps meet the needs of employers and industry, so that both employer, the economy can grow, but also people know that they have jobs in the future. Reforms that address these needs will help create an education system that improves the well-being of residents and strengthens our future economic growth. And in terms of next steps, we, we're presenting the report and recommendations to build support and awareness of where we're coming from, but we're also participating in creating momentum on common themes in terms of the legislation that's been introduced. We've been generally, many of those ideas, concepts are in our recommendations, so we're supportive of that. And we also want to promote and advocate for some of the case studies that we have in the report. They're, they're good examples of how things can happen, and we encourage others to see whether they can be replicated elsewhere. They wouldn't be customized, they wouldn't be exactly the same, because the nature of each community might be different, but certainly, there's some good ideas, and maybe we can, it may be useful for people to follow that. The other thing we're doing is, we're participating in a shared education vision for Michigan with the Michigan Department of Education. Recently, State Superintendent identified some of those organizations that I listed who have produced reports, and we've been talking about, what are the three or four things that really will move the needle in terms of improving education in Michigan? And Superintendent Weston's goal is to make Michigan a top 10 in 10 years. But we're looking at, okay, so if there were three things that, say, a group of five, six, seven organizations agreed on, how can we advocate for those policies and make those happen? Because we know that they are the most important, even though we'll all be, we'll be advocating for all of our 15 recommendations in our case, and others will do whatever they have. But if we can identify sort of real momentum around three or four issues, I think we're going to be more successful. So I think ultimately, a key outcome of this work is to speak with a common voice, to build momentum on the most important elements of creating an education system that provides quality education for all students. And so in, that's really the end of my presentation, but I'd be happy to take any questions, but also, you know, get you to think about whether, you know, you support the recommendations overall, if there are certain recommendations that are more important to you, which action steps might make the most difference? And did we forget anything? If there's anything here that we didn't do, we still have opportunities, it might not be in our report. But certainly, as we pick up ideas and input from our various audiences, we, as we meet with the State Department of Education, we're actually sharing those ideas and saying, okay, we may not have had that, but we've heard that this is really important, so let's put that in the mix as well. So those, that's really the end of my presentation, but I'd be happy to take any questions and hope you'll all participate in SEMCOG events in the future. You are all welcome. We appreciate input from our education members, and not just on education issues. Certainly, we have our task forces, and we want you to be there, but Trustee McKnight Morton is on several other committees, too, and once we find someone, we don't let them go, so. She knows. But please come to our events, participate, look for, if you have questions about data, we have enormous amounts of data. Ask us, we can put together for our members customized data for specific needs within your organization. So with that, that's the end of my presentation, be happy to take any questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the report. I haven't, it just came today, so I will look at it and the, especially the recommendations and action steps, which I just took the alliance ad and seem a lot more specific than in the PowerPoint you just went through. I just have, off the top of my head, I wrote a bunch of notes, which I'll look at, and I, I would like to take the opportunity you've offered, potentially, to participate in future activities or in a group setting. One thing I would say, when I look at the Changing Skill Sets page, I don't know if you want to pull it back up, but as you pointed out, not a lot of that is technical training. Now, I think technical training is very important, and it's something that we do here. I also want to point out that, as you've pointed out, that jobs in the healthcare field is going to be increasing, and we've recently made some steps to significantly increase our capacity for training in that area. So I think WCC is moving in the right direction to address some of that. But I do want to just mention, one thing that jumps out at me is a lot of these things like integrity, decision-making, desire to learn, teamwork, all of those are learned through a strong liberal arts education. And I think something that's frequently underemphasized is the importance of a strong liberal arts education. And I would say that I'd like to see something call that out specifically, since it's, it's all over what the employers are looking for, let's explicitly point out that, hey, this is philosophy, this is history, this is literature, this is, these are the traditional liberal arts will teach these skills that employers, at the bottom line, are looking for. Yes, the technical skills are important, but the foundation underlying what you do with those technical skills is equally as important. And I'd like to see some sort of emphasis on liberal arts education in this as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm definitely written that down.
Excuse me, I've lost my voice, but I just want to emphasize just a little bit what you, you said, Trustee DeVarty, is that we did discuss that. And we did, I mean, believe me, it wasn't just Nahid and Grant, it was like people from everywhere, just about all community colleges, Monroe. from everywhere, just about all community colleges, Monroe, Macomb, Mount Combe, St. Clair, I mean, plus business people. We're all involved, teachers, administrators, presidents, we all discussed this. But that was one of the point, too. But I think what, from my take of it, is that when we were going through all of these areas, there was a lot to discuss. And that's a good point that you're bringing up, you know, and possibly, you know, like Nahid can go back and say, hey, you know, maybe we can look at this area again, because there were so many areas to discuss. And believe me, there's some areas that Nahid hasn't even brought up yet, that is very, very detrimental to education and the industry of education. How we, where are the teachers going to come because they're leaving the industry? Or how do we keep them? What about the base pay? You know, they're not just babysitters, they need to be paid like a professional, and they're not being paid like a professional. And unfortunately, the people, the powers that be are not looking at them as professional. So, you know, but that's just one of those things that we do talk about.
Thank you. And we, there are a lot more details in the report.
Yes, I just took a quick glance at it, I could clearly see that.
It's quite in-depth.
And we may, and this is not our last project, we've actually done projects on soft skills. We did a whole initiative on lifelong soft skills framework, and the fact that you can't teach soft skills for two weeks in seventh grade and be done, it's something that happens over a lifetime, your parents, your community, pre-K, through, you know, higher education and employers all have a role in development of soft skills. And, but yes, and liberal arts education certainly does that. We actually did find, though, that CTE, the CTE programs that we have in Michigan have both an emphasis on the technical, but they also teach those, you know, workplace skills, and there's a real emphasis on that. And so we've been promoting CTE, and actually, I think one of the recommendations is even to say that all students should take at least one CTE class, just to see what it's like, because it's neither, it's a combination of academic and technical. And so I think that students who come out of the CTE programs, they have skills, they have certifications, and they have the ability to go straight into work force if they want to.
Thank you.
Thank you both, that was just wonderful. You wrapped it up, summed it up.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Did we have another question?
I just, you were asking what we saw, just, we haven't had a chance to read it all, but I'm particularly struck with the funding issues. I mean, there are pages of wonderful ideas here, but unless Dollar Bill comes up with the money for it, it's not going to happen. So, and I was particularly struck with going from 7th to 34th. It seems to me that not much of this is going to happen unless the funding is addressed.
So Michigan Education Funding Collaborative is a group of about 22 leaders from education, business, the legislature, looking at the cost of educating a child. And their report will come out in January, around January 16, they're actually looking at that and using that as a basis for working with the legislature to say, you know what, yes, I mean, you can give every child $7,700 or $7,800, but certain students need more to take, to get them to the right level. And so this study is actually looking at the additional costs for students with special needs or ELL, and with a view to saying, okay, well, in our school district or organization, we have 35% with special needs, we need to make sure that we have those funding. So hopefully, and they're actually on this shared education vision group as well, so hopefully, we're going to see some momentum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on to our monthly reports, Tab B, the Personnel Recommendations. Do I hear a motion to accept the Personnel Recommendations?
So moved.
A second. Any discussion on the Personnel Recommendations? Yes, Trustee Hatcher.
Belinda McLeire either has 29 or 30 years of experience, one of the...
Do we know which one it is?
Thirty.
I don't know.
Let's just call it 30. Any other comments on the personnel? Okay, and this is, this is accolade, okay. All in favor of accepting the Personnel Recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, remarks of the Board of Trustees, does anybody have any remarks?
I would just like to say, first of all, I want to say, I'm very sorry I was late. I had to go to see a doctor, then go by the drugstore to get my medication, and it took forever because they didn't have my prescription. So, and then I got caught on Washtenaw, so needless, I don't need to say anymore. But I do want to say, from the bottom of my heart and my family, I want to thanks, thank everyone from, from here, this show, up at my mother's funeral on this past Saturday. It meant so much to see faces. I really appreciate it a lot, and my family too. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks, I appreciate everyone showing their support, those showing up that, you know, didn't even ask, like Reverend Dean Tucker, truly appreciate you, what he did, and joining the rest of the clergy in delivering the passages out of the Bible and such, and that truly meant a lot. And then having the Board and other members of the Washtenaw Community College staff, those who sent cards, thank you very much, very touching. You know, words just cannot express what we've gone through, and I'm sure everyone else have experienced what we've experienced, but when it hits your home, you know, it's something totally different. And the outpouring of love, the prayers, and the support has been tremendous. And again, I appreciate it, the family appreciates you, and thank you so much, because we love you, thanks.
Okay, are there any comments from the President?
No comments.
No comments, thank you. Moving on to Old Business, Tab C, Revisions to Policy 3046, is that a misplace?
That's right.
It's three, okay, on the agenda it says 3046, but it's 3041.
It's 3046.
Okay. Okay. Are there, actually, do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussion on the recommendation of this policy? Any comments or questions? VP Hearn, is there anything you'd like to say about it?
Nope, I think we kind of cleared that up when we did the MTA changes.
Okay. All right, hearing no questions, we will go ahead and take the roll. Chairman McKnight-Morton? Yes. Vice Chair Fleming? Yes. Professor American?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeVerty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Moving on to Tab D, the Contract Change Order for the Campus Security System. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Court.
Court. Any discussion or questions on this? Mr. Flowers, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
I know we addressed him last month.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? Okay, Vanessa, go ahead and take the roll.
Chairman McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Professor American?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeVerty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Moving on to Tab E, the Emeritus Staff Recipients, do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Do I hear support?
Support.
Any discussions or questions on this, the Emeritus Recommendations?
Just to notice that George Cap taught for 48 years, he was determined to teach more years than Edith Broke, and I think he did.
I would just like to give my congratulations to all of these people. They devoted their life here, and it shows that if you live long enough, you can be tired from here.
400 years.
Any other comments? All right, this is not a roll. Okay, all in favor of accepting the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to Tab F, we put it off the long line. We were waiting for you guys.
I remember this.
I thought we changed our mind.
Do I hear a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Do I hear support? Support. Any questions or comments on the resolution to rename the Plant Operations Building?
I would propose that the resolution be read. I'd be happy to do so if you want.
All two pages?
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I'd be, I'd take bridge.
Okay, go for it.
With your long service, you should be the person to read it.
Today, December 12, 2017, the Board of Trustees wishes to honor Damon B. Flowers, Vice President of Facilities Development and Operations, for his extraordinary service to Washtenaw Community College. For more than 23 years, Damon has managed the countless facets inherent in ensuring the college runs smoothly, efficiently, and with a keen respect for the environment. Damon's impressive career accomplishments while at WCC illustrate his leadership abilities and passion for both sustaining and growing our campus. Under his management, two campus master plans were written and implemented. Those plans included more than 130 construction projects with a cumulative value of $120 million, and encompassed the construction of the Business Education Building, the Gunder-Mirren Building, the Great Lakes Regional Training Center, the Health and Fitness Center, the Landau Skilled Trades Building, the Storage and Receiving Building, the Parking Structure, and also the Athletic Fields. During his tenure, significant additions were made to the Larry L. Whitworth Occupational Educational Building, the Technical and Instruction and Industrial Building, the Morris Lawrence Building, and the Crane Liberal Arts and Science Building. An innovative thinker, Damon initiated the college's first campus space utilization study and first campus-wide energy master plan, which resulted in significant efficiencies and cost savings for the college. Damon's forward-thinking approach and adoption of sophisticated technology is evident across campus. He directed and implemented the first keyless card access system for all classrooms and labs, as well as the installation of a campus-wide emergency lockdown and video surveillance system. He also greatly enhanced the productivity of the landscape and grounds maintenance crew by establishing a computerized management system for all building operations. Always a good steward of our environment, Damon established sustainability and energy conservation as campus standards, and introduced and expanded recycling operations and composting to campus. Other sustainability efforts included working with the City of Ann Arbor and Ann Arbor Township to develop an emergency campus backup water resource and the installation of a vegetated building roofs. He also expanded the campus landscaping to include over 15,000 annual flowers and plants, making our campus beautiful year-round. During his time at the college, Damon was responsible for securing four Department of Energy grants and recently obtained a grant from the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments to establish a 0.6-mile walking and bicycle path through the camp, across the campus. Damon is the recipient of several national awards and professional recognitions, including the Grand Award from the Professional Grounds Management Awards Program, the Innovative Architecture and Design Award from Recreation Management Magazine, the prestigious Arbor Day Foundation Tree Campus USA designation, and gold and silver design designations from the internationally recognized LEED Green Building Certification System. Under his leadership, the college has grown from 600,000 square feet to 1.2 million square feet. His tireless work has been a key reason the college continues to be a valued community resource and academic home to thousands of WCC students. Be it therefore resolved, that in recognition of his longstanding commitment to the college and his 23 years of extraordinary service to Washtenaw Community College and its mission, the Board of Trustees finds it to be fitting and appropriate that the building that houses the college's facilities and plant operations leadership bear Vice President Flowers' name. Therefore, the Plant Operations Building shall be renamed the Damon B. Flowers Building.
Yay! Here, here.
Speech.
Speech.
Any comment?
Well, I guess I'd just like to say, this is obviously an extraordinary honor, very humbling honor for me. When President Blanca first, I guess about two months ago now, called me on a Saturday and said that the Board was considering this honor, I almost fell off my chair. I just could not really comprehend this kind of recognition. Whatever I've accomplished, I think is really indicative of the entire staff that we have here at the college that I've had the honor of working with, our facility staff, our landscape and design staff, which some of the Board met at their reception in October, but our entire facility staff has just been a great joy to work with, many of whom have been with the college longer than I have, and our custodial maintenance staff are some of the most dedicated staff I've had the pleasure of working with. But it's the entire college, I mean, this has been sort of, for me, it's been a kind of a labor of love, of working here. Our management staff and facilities have been great, I mean, our OPTs, Penny Hill, who Linda often reminds me that she hired Penny, but I, my retort is that she stays with me, though. For almost 23 years I've been here, so. Our management staff, our great faculty who serve our students, our executive staff, the folks at this table who have been so supportive of me, and having the honor of working with three presidents who, whose vision has really been responsible for the things that we've been able to accomplish, so. More importantly, I guess, the Board of Trustees, because you are the leaders and you make everything that we do, that I've been able to do, happen, so. I just thank you all from the bottom of my heart, this is a great recognition, and I really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's great. Oh, should we get a picture before voting or after? Should we vote first?
Vote.
Okay, we're going to vote first. All right, go ahead and call the roll, Vanessa.
Chairman McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Professor American?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeVerty?
An enthusiastic yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Why don't we just get through the last action item?
Get through the last action item?
Because I think it'll go quick.
All right, can we do the picture after? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Tab G, the Network Firewall Purchase, Discussion and Possible Action. I know that because we're dealing with the network firewall, this is a security issue that, and they need to have it updated, I know that they want to ask us to consider a possible action on this tonight. So do I hear a motion to...
So moved.
So moved. Support? Okay, any discussion on this?
Nope.
Okay, and Mr. Johnson, would you... Okay, and Mr. Johnson, would you like to say anything about it?
Sure, maybe just a couple, a couple of words, you know, our firewall is very old, it's five, it's five years old. It sounds such a short life, but in the world of technology and in the world of data security, it feels like forever for us. The threats are constant, and this has, had been in our plan to put in the budget for next year, but because of the, the evolution of the threats, the fact that our current firewall is becoming more and more out of date with each day that passes, we thought it was incumbent upon us that if we could cobble together the funds within our current year budget, which I can, that we would bring forward to the Board the possibility of purchasing and installing a new firewall. We, we used an outside firm to help us with this, Campus Works, who have experts in the area. We vetted four different manufacturers of firewalls, including our current one, Cisco, their ASA firewall. We felt that the Palo Alto firewall was superior in many ways with that. And then once we had settled on the Palo Alto firewall, we then went through the bid process. Fortunately, as you might know, the state, State of Michigan has the purchasing consortium, and E&amp;I is, is a vendor that actually had done the robust competitive bid on this very firewall. So we felt like that we were getting the very best prices, in fact, the discounts on the elements of the, of the firewall we wanted to buy were anywhere from 15 to 40 percent discounts off, off the list price. We then looked and asked for quotes on, on those prices for one to three years. We felt that the three-year quote, we know that we're going to have this for at least three years, and it was about a $25,000 savings to go with the three-year commitment versus the one-year commitment. We, we feel like that if the board felt so inclined that we would, and approve, that we would go ahead and buy it, and we are currently targeting the very narrow window of MLK weekend, we need to actually bring down our network to install the new firewall. We bring down our network for about two hours to install the new firewall, so we always try to find those win, windows that have the least impact. But we would do our planning work during Christmas break and then the two weeks that precede the MLK weekend, and then go ahead and do the, the installation.
Trustee Davis?
Actually, I had a question, and I think you may have answered it in what you were saying, because I was looking here, well, first you said a firewall is five years out of date, and you're looking at the cost effectiveness from one to three years, and the three years actually worked out better. So we're no longer going to wait five years to replace our firewall, right? We're going to do this every three years, or do we have to constantly repay for, every three years out, we have to repay to have a new firewall installed? How is that going to...
We would, we, we felt that, that this firewall, with updates that we'll get from, from, from the manufacturer, will keep us day to the ark for three years. After the three years, from year to year, we will reassess, just as we did with our current firewall, which has been now five, five years old. But the technologies have evolved so far in the five years that normal updates to our current firewall don't provide as robust a level of data security protection that we need. So we will do that assessment again at the end of the three-year time period, and then, and then, and then decide if we want to go year to year, if that's the best pricing, or if we need, need to go out and buy a new firewall. But we feel very certain that for three years, that this will give us the production that we need.
Okay. Other questions? Trustee Milliken, then DeVarty.
It looks like we put a good deal of weight on Campus Works here. Why do we like them?
Campus Works was the firm that the board had approved to do an initial assessment of our entire IET environment. And, and they reaffirmed what the college IET staff knew, which was our current firewall needed to be replaced. And so it, it, it was reassuring to us to get a third-party firm to do their own separate assessment and to come to the same conclusion. And they have a very robust team in this particular area for expertise.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
As I recall earlier this year, we had a problem with our computer system or our emails or something. Is this partially going to address those, the shortcomings that allowed that to happen, or is...
Actually not, those were separate issues.
Okay.
The, the, the email system was just staying current with all the, the various updates that you need to the soft, the software, and it was a two-week window that we were out, out of date on, on, on our email system. And the bad guys are really, really aggressive, and their two weeks, they targeted the entire world, really. That came out of a leak from gov, from government data, actually. That's what exposed that particular threat. And so the second outage that we had, had nothing to do with data, so, care, care, so...
Go ahead.
The question, I would like to expand a little bit on, about, from Trustee Milliken regarding Campus Works. I just wanted to say that Campus Works is highly respected company throughout the country, and it is, they have their, their expertise in many, many universities and major community colleges across the country. So they, they come highly recommended and they do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Does, is anybody like opposed to this being an action item?
I'd move for an immediate move, that this be advanced to immediate action, a vote on the board.
I second that motion.
Second, okay.
So we have two votes, one to move it, and then one to...
Just a voice vote on that, and then the roll call.
Okay. All right, all in favor of approving this being moved to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Vanessa, go ahead and call the roll.
Chair McKnight-Martin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Trevor Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Okay. That's everything, meeting adjourned.